And I think that the whole purpose too of doing this work and doing the master plan of identifying the priorities is will help you to not get in that situation where you, you know, you don't want to do work and then five, 10 years down the road undo all of that work.
Right.
Because it doesn't fit into the the overall kind of plan. And so, so really part of this, I think some of that is going to become, once you start, we start exploring scenarios and those scenarios are really just, if you think of this master plan as a roadmap and a scenario is just a possible path that you can take, I think those are, those scenarios will need to be shared with the community and have discussion with the community on those scenarios so that way you can get their input on it and really understand how far, you know, how far do you go with a bond for the first phase? It probably will end up being something with the amount of significant work that that's identified here. It may be a couple phases that you would have to engage the community with with bond referendums. But, you know, until you know that amount or know kind of what what is feasible, you know, you, it's hard to, you know, plan towards that. So really the scenarios and this tool will allow you to have those conversations to, you know, hone in and start to prioritize the things that you'd want to start with. If you can go further with it, great. If not, then you know you're going to focus on these things and it's going to still play into the overall long-term master plan so that way you're not undoing things in the future. And so that's, that's the whole point of this work is to really provide you with a tool, the district with a tool so that way you can make those good, good decisions as you move forward.
Tom, I'm going to let you go first.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the things we heard in last bond issue was having a long-term plan. So there's different ways you go about it. You can actually do like Ann Arbor did and the city of Detroit, they approved a billion-dollar bond. Doesn't mean you're going to levy that billion dollars day one. There's a series of bonds that you do because you're trying to smooth that rate out and not have ups and downs in a military rate. So, but they all want to see what does that mean for the future? Am I going to vote for this one? Does my school that is in the first phase going to get in the next phase? I think people are going to want to see that whole thing. In addition, you'll see the first time the governor of the state of Michigan is going to offer infrastructure money. So if we have a long-term plan, we can just take that money and put it right into the place and then, you know, extend phase two is now going to be covered by that. There's a lot of money also from the federal government coming out for energy improvements. So those are the things that it's not always be a bond issue, but if we have a long-term plan, we just plug it in and we're going to save taxpayers' money from trying to foot the bill through a bond issue.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, well, James answered the question I was going to propose, but replacing the long-term replace is very, very, very important. I can think of one building that if we had that information, if we had this information like 20 years ago on the one building, what we were doing like every four or five years was dropping, you know, four and a half million, eight million. Like Bob Seeger said, if I knew then what I know now, thinking about it, wow, we're halfway there rebuilding that building. So that, yeah, I can see us not acting on it right away, but it's good to know upfront. So that's the way I'm looking at it.
Just want to make sure it's understood by the community what they're.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's not that, I always use the term lipstick on a pig, that we are putting money into something that we know we're going to be mothballing or tearing down in just a couple of years. Trustee McDonald?
My questions have kind of been answered, but so what I'm hearing is that with the, the different timeframes, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, what this material that you're giving us is the roadmap and it's the framework, as you said, to help us make the appropriate decisions throughout the whole process. You have, these are the priorities for 10 years, but you might not be able to do all of those now, but you can, you just get a better feel of what is needed all around and it does help you make the best decisions. At least you feel like you're doing it with data and not just running blind guessing, hoping, whatever the case may be. So I appreciate the information that we're getting. I think it's valuable and it's definitely needed.
Okay, great.
Go before any other hands come up.
So this is just a preview of where, where the data is landing right now. So here are the buildings that are showing up in terms of scope for replace versus renovates. Again, we don't know what that means in terms of specifics yet and how that fits into the scenarios, but we did want to share where that's landing.
And the community should take this with a grain of salt.
A huge grain of salt.
Do not expect that this means that these buildings are on their way out.
No.
Yeah.
And again, this is 30 years.
Or not unsafe or not good curriculum. These are just looking at long-term, looking at the factors that whether we should replace, looking at them replacing at some point, but nowhere does it mean they're unsafe or, you know, the teachers are doing a phenomenal job teaching kids.
Yeah. And it, and it about, you know, best value point, right? Simple as that. And so then again, in terms of prioritization, how might we phase the projects over the next 30 years? Just thinking about significant needs, moderate needs and minimal needs and where the data, where the, what the data is telling us in terms of priorities. So again, around the building, infrastructure and maintenance capacity and then again, educational fitness, that adaptability assessment. And so whether or not that's 10, 20 and 30 years or however we end up slicing and dicing it, this is kind of, it did end up cleanly, 10, 10 and 10 at the moment, which is just so lovely. I just really warms my heart. And so here you can see the three buckets of high priority, moderate priority and low And so, yeah, please.
Well, the, the one thing when we look at these high priority, moderate priority and low priority, once again, it kind of goes back to logistics of things.
Yeah.
Because a lot of these are elementary schools and shifting students while you're doing any major renovations and or, you know, whatever we determine needs to be done, we don't, like I said, once again, we don't have property, we don't have ability to, you know, take a whole 300 student population and put them someplace else for a year while we do, you know, so I just want to be cautious as to what we promise that we can accomplish logistically.
Yep. I'm so happy you brought that up. The idea of, we often call, call this swing space, the idea of swing space where we would put students or how we would manage those logistics is something that we would factor in.
Okay.
And depending on the level of detail and how, you know, where we go, you know, that, that might be up for question. We would talk with the district about different strategies that we could use to, to mitigate that. Yep, so that's all part of that.
Have you worked with, I'm sorry, have you worked with other districts, for instance, that have these elementary schools and you've been able to successfully transition the, the school itself from an older building and temporary space? Just because we know transitioning with children, the resilient transitioning with adults, it's a little bit harder. So that constant, so I guess is there already some?
Examples.
Examples that you guys have used so that we can make it least disruptive, not only to the students, the staff and also to the parents?
Yes. Yeah, there's, we've worked in many projects like that. It seems like it's probably more the, more the norm doing that. So when it gets to that, that phase of really, when we understand what approach we're going to take and then understand, like, this is going to be a real project and that, there's a whole study that needs to go into that. But we, we've worked on a lot of those, those projects. Safety and security of students is so important. And so there's a, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of, you know, best-case examples out there that we can draw from when it comes time for that to make sure that it can be handled right. But it, it happens a lot, so it's, it's pretty common, yeah.
And I think you're right. It is more often a challenge for the adults than it is for the kids. Okay, well, we've had it. Oh, yep, please.
Just one more. When you give us the scenario examples and you keep talking about, and I love this, the future functionality of buildings, will that be a part of the scenarios too? Is it, will you go into that as well or are you just looking at again each building and what its needs are and?
Yeah, I love that you asked that question. We can build that in a bit. We've worked with the district and actually provided what we call a kind of a high-level educational specification. And so what that does is really imagine the types of spaces that came out of all of that visioning work that we did. And so that'll be an appendix to the report. And so that's, that's kind of already been done and fleshed out. But that, it, that assumes, so all of the scenarios assume that as something that can be built in and lived through each scenario.
As you go through.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Will there be like specific examples too that we can look at and so we can get a better understanding of what the future functionality is?
Yeah, absolutely. So in that report, you know, we have also, you know, plans, but also there's a lot of photographs of other schools and examples. And so when, when we pull the scenarios together, we'll show exemplars, we'll show, you know, here's what this district did or here's what happened over here. You know, as we mentioned in the beginning, you know, we've worked all around the world so we can bring a lot of examples to you and, you know, to the district here. But yes, there, there will be some specific examples. I mean, what we're not going to be doing is showing what the exact floor plans of a school might be because it's, it's kind of way too early for that. But we would show the types of environments that do support, that are conducive to, to the vision for teaching and learning. And really hopefully that sparks dialogue within the community. And those are things that typically would be, you know, shared with the community and having, you know, further engagements with the community to talk about those, those types of environments.
That's good because as you're, as we're discussing this, I've got ideas in my head of what you're saying about, and I'm sure, I'm sure everyone else does, and I'm sure none of them are in line, alignment. So this would just, I think, give people a, just a better idea of, of what, you know, is possible or thinking outside the box or just, you know, things that we haven't thought about.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Trustee Watts?
So I'm just going to go ahead and answer your question about what I'm excited about.
Great.
So thank you for putting, I think, this, this together because I think it gives us a good roadmap and thank you for putting the time and all of your efforts and all of those who've been giving us some feedback for that. So in terms of the space, and I think on one of the slides I saw that in terms of what the square footage of what a traditional classroom looks like and what the projection of a futuristic or what other school districts may have as their classroom. I saw that there was outdoor space. And I've seen classrooms where they'll have restrooms inside the classroom itself and then they have a door leading to the outdoor space that is fenced in. Is, I guess, is, are those some of the scenarios in terms of classrooms that you are seeing that seem to be more of the forward thinking?
Yes, I mean, we, we see outdoor learning as a very important piece of education, as more of a kind of holistic approach to teaching and learning and using outdoors more. We've also, interesting, through the pandemic, we found that, you know, just out of necessity, a lot of schools have had to use the outdoors and then they found out that they actually really love the outdoors and actually have provide, you know, more opportunities now. And so that was one of the, I guess, silver linings of the pandemic. So, so yes, those would be things that would definitely be explored. I mean, in the master plan, we wouldn't be getting into the, the details of that, but those do, those are qualities that we do see that make for good, good schools of having great outdoor learning space. I mean, just from a health and wellness perspective, it's, it, there's a lot of research that backs that up. And, and so there's a lot of ways you can design schools to do that in a very safe way. You know, some existing schools, it, it's a little bit harder to do that just because you're dealing with existing layouts, but with new schools, you could easily create layouts that incorporate outdoor spaces in very safe ways. So, and we, we did actually, I mean, we, we walked through every single school in the district here and there, there definitely are some opportunities. A lot of your schools do have courtyard areas that could be, could be better utilized in, in ways and so those could be some opportunities.
And outdoor, outdoor learning and the connection between indoors and outdoors is one of the patterns that we put up during one of our workshops and people were excited about it. And I know that Salina, for instance, is doing tons with outdoor learning and, and they're really excited about it over there.
I'm a numbers guy, so when you started showing that dashboard, I want to dig into it. When do we think that's going to go live for people to be able to use it?
The dashboard, that's a good question. I think we can work with the district to make sure that that's something that's digestible and is easy to understand for people because there's a lot there. I think the map is something that's more ready and we'll jump into the map next. I think the map is ready to go live tomorrow.
Okay. And you're saying the map, but there was many slides of maps?
Yeah, so there's an interactive map that we haven't gotten to yet.
Thank you.
Stay tuned.
I just wanted to make one correction. As we were estimating, we know preschool is important and universal, it's actually 624 current, but we still estimated the eight to 100 to 1,000, but that, we'd have to get more solid numbers, you know, looking at actual data trends. But we definitely want to consider that because that possibility does exist.
Mm-hmm, okay.
All right. Next?
Great. Okay, so, so we want to talk about an interactive map. And really what this interactive map is, is it's a graphic representation of all the data that we just went over. And it's designed to be a communication tool between the district and the public. So it's designed to be fun, I think it's fun, and to really share everything that we just went over in real time. So I'm actually going to go ahead and pull it up on the screen right now. And so you see here a welcome screen, so welcome to the Dearborn Public School Facility Planning Interactive Map. And you can hit continue. And then you're brought to this interface. And we hope that it's pretty intuitive. You can see a legend in the bottom right-hand corner that shows different colors for elementary school, middle school and high school. And there are different markers that are, are representative or similar to what you just saw the last hour or so, depending on elementary school, middle school, high school, et cetera. There's a bunch of information here that represents all of the data, the enrollment information, utilization, facility condition index. And then there are blue, there's blue text where it says click for more info. You could click for more info and hopefully these graphics also look similar. There are explanations similar or actually identical to what you also just saw presented. So all of this is, is identical to what we just shared. There's also a search function in the top right corner where you could write the name or type in the name of the school. And you can just zoom in. So here we can zoom in, we can click on a school. So I'm going to click on Maples Elementary School. And you'll see the information for Maples populate here on the left side. So you can see their enrollment for this year, you can see their projected enrollment, you could see their current capacity, you could see their utilization now and in the future, you can see their facility condition index and their adaptability assessment score. And this will be representative of their school boundary. And so we hope what this does is is just a communication tool so that everyone can understand the data that we, that we are working with. And here you can see the GSRP students. So there for Oakman, there are 32 GSRP students currently enrolled. So we're curious what questions you might have, yes.
Can you, so when it says 60% underutilized, to me it automatically says, well, that means we're 60% under where we should be. Do you see what I'm saying, how it reads?
I do. That's a great que, that's a great point. We can look at, at reframing that somehow.
Because I think the other one showed them overcrowding 95%. So as a parent, I would think that that means they're 95% above overcrowding.
Yeah, and that's how I would think that a lot of people are going to, that's how.
So I think we're going to get some panicked parents.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yep, we can reframe that. That's a great point.
Yeah, what's difficult with it is really the, the baseline is 85% is what you typically design a school to. So that's really good feedback.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we can reframe that in a way that would make sense.
Yeah, community members on a whole aren't as used to, just, just like, they won't know that GSRP is Great Start Readiness Program either. I mean, you know, when you, when you talk, talk in terms that we're all familiar with that they don't see on a regular basis.
Yep.
They can misinterpret it very easily.
Sure.
And that spreads like wildfire in the community when they converse amongst themselves and.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful.
Yep, those are great points, thanks.
Yeah, percentages and those kinds, numbers kind of tend to be difficult. People want, want to be able to, I, I know that, that when I send people to either a city website or our school district website and say, oh, it's just, it's right there, look, anything that requires more than a couple of clicks and, and a, and a quick summary, they kind of walk away. President Thorpe wants to get into all the numbers and the data, but I'll tell you, there's a lot of people who are not going to.
If, if there's two clicks, it's one in too many in some cases.
We hear you.
We'll, we'll continue to work on this, this piece then. Yep, that's really good feedback.
So any, yeah, any other notes or comments that you have, please?
On, go to a school like Nowlan, if you know where that's at.
You're going to have to direct me a little bit.
Yeah, you're, you're right next to it.
There's circles, right there.
Just slightly left.
There you go.
The reason I bring that one up is I know that's got a larger population of special needs. So if we are adding GSRP classrooms in there, are we also saying anything about where some of our special needs programs are? Because I'm going to assume they're more likely to look undercrowded because there's usually a higher, well, a lower classroom size in those. They might have a, a classroom for sensory needs. The ratios.
Ratio of student in a.
So do we, do we put anything like that in there so that when people are looking at this, they might be able to, to read a little information of why one, one building might look a little different than another?
We don't currently have that layer of information.
No, it's typically based on the classroom usage. So, you know, you, you don't take into consideration a gym class has 60 kids in it versus a special class for 15. It's just based on this ratio of kids to classroom availability.
So if we've got a classroom where there's 20, whether it's special needs or we know that our, our lower L is lower or a higher ratio?
Lower ratio.
Lower ratio, like I said. Or if it's one where it's the upper L and you know you've got more students in the classroom, we'd be saying from a capacity ratio, they'd be equal?
Well, it doesn't, the, when you look at the state population trends of how to calculate your utilization, it doesn't take into consideration the, the different class sizes in total.
Okay.
So they're just using a square footage?
Correct.
Of a room versus how many students can be?
Yes.
Just like our buses.
And, and they're looking at it through a whole building and not an individual classroom?
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Barry?
Are you looking for feedback right now just on the map or just overall presentation?
At the moment, just the map, but we would take feedback on, on anything.
Okay. Anything other feedback on the map?
I like the idea of using the map. I think it's, it's more, it pops out to people. It's, it's a little bit easier for them because they're usually going to be looking for just their specific school or location.
Right.
So instead of having to read through a list of data, I, I, they just want to click on theirs and get it right there. Just, yeah, I would just clean up some of the ways it's presented there.
Great.
So it's a little easier understood without having to do a lot more research.
Anything else on this before we move on?
Okay, we just had next steps.
So with the next steps?
Yes.
What we need to decide as a board, everything is going to be brought back to us. We're going to want to get, well, I'm sorry, I won't put that out yet that way. We, would we want to get community feedback? As a board, do we want to give the community a chance to give us feedback on the different plans that are being presented?
Well, are those, aren't those the scenarios that they're going to present though?
Yes, but what we, one of the next steps is kind of, do we have the presentation get brought back before us, for us to talk about it before then it goes out to the community, for the community to share their thoughts before it comes back to us a third or a second time, a third time, depending on how you want to count it? Or do we let them create the, the possibilities? We have a chance to review it, but not necessarily do a formal presentation, already have the community date set and take it right out to the community?
And then, and then come back for conversation with, with the added information of what the community's.
Yeah, do, do we need to see this again before we're ready to start putting in front of the community? I guess would be a different way to say it.
I would ask, I would ask the experts since they've done, since this is what they do, what they would recommend.
What's most valued?
Well, I guess I'll start with kind of what we had planned for this is really as far as our scope of work is we were going to, we've, we've completed our community engagement in this scope of work. Obviously, there definitely needs to be more community engagement that you do. How we really see this is this is, you know, tonight we shared the raw data, we wanted to go through that with you to make sure that it made sense, you understand that. We are going to apply it to scenarios which are really just how approaches that you can take with it. And we were going to present that back to you as, as far as does this make sense? From there, the expectation or the, you know, you definitely will need to go out to your community with those scenarios and they, they may adjust. How they will be kind of framed is really sort of more of a status quo approach and a more kind of innovative approach. And it's really, you can think of it like a spectrum. So, so I guess to answer your question directly, I, from our side, our, our intent was to come back to you in, in about a month or two to show you these, these scenarios. That kind of completes our current scope of work at this point. But then at that point, you'll need to, you know, share that with your community and, you know, get feedback from your community on, on those scenarios, so.
Trustee Barry?
It's exactly what I was thinking. Information is here in front of us, you're pretty much going to hand off the baton to us. I think we need to start putting this information, it's, information is out there now, as of tonight. Most of this information is out there. But yes, of course, I think we do need to somehow, some way engage with the community. I don't know if it's another board study session or maybe the administration put out some forums to get into this information and ask for some input.
I was thinking back to when, I don't even know how many years ago it was now, when we were doing the high school redistricting. And we had the presentation brought to us and we started having our own ideas, but then we went out to the community. And I know for myself, my ideas completely changed after hearing from the community. So along with the same idea on this one, does it, do I need to see a lot from fielding before I'm ready to say, take it to the community and let the community go through it? Like, I don't think I'm going to all of a sudden say, oh, no, we don't want to share that with the community, we want to direct it this way or that way. I don't have any intention of that.
Is it, is it fielding that's going to be going back out to the community? That's how I'm hearing.
No, it would, it would be us, but fielding would, would give us the final piece that they've got.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's what I mean.
Just one, one thing to clarify on that. We, as you, so our current scope of work is to kind of give you this, this report. We do find with communities though, that as you re-engage them, we could help with that process too, as you start getting into details and you're talking through scenarios, we can help with facilitation. So we could still be a part of that with you to do, to, you know, to do some of that gathering of more information, refining, things like that. So I just want you to know, it's not like we would just disappear and good luck, we can continue to help you with that process.
Or even just to be able to again, explain FCI to people. You might be able to do it better than.
Yeah, our intent is not to just disappear here. So, but yeah, our current scope of work is, is this and then from there, but we can continue on to, to help and assist in any way, so.
Trustee Watts?
Well, I guess that's what I was anticipating, you coming back, giving us the two scenarios. Then we put it out to the public and then with their feedback, we can come back and say, hey, we're hearing X, Y and Z, can you tweak this? Or we're hearing this and give it back to you to say, yes, we can go ahead and, and change some of these items based on the community feedback, correct?
Yeah.
So it's not like you guys would abandon, right? You'd still would be there to give us some sort of support.
Absolutely. Yes, right. And we can support. to determine how long it may take. It's hard to, you know, when you start it, you kind of have to just kind of see what kind of comes, comes up, what kind of questions come up. And so you have to sort of learn your way through that process. And so, so you can engage us to, to, you know, be, be on your side through that whole process. So if we need to refine things, we can even help with facilitating some sessions, workshops with community to kind of go through, you know, the scenarios and, and things like that. So, so yeah, to answer your question, yes, we, we can, we're here to help refine things. This is not like it's done, set in stone. You know, it, it really is, what we hope that this product is, is it, as we mentioned before, it's really a framework. It's a living document. It's, it's a tool to make good decisions. You shouldn't treat it as like a, you know, here's the, the plan, we're going to stick to it. It's really a roadmap for moving forward. And it, it really is meant to kind of give you guidance and direction as you move forward.
Trustee McDonald?
I think, as trustee Watts was saying, that if you come to us with the scenarios, make sure that we understand them and have our questions answered before we take it to the community. And we're not sure of what the questions are, or just so we have a better handle on it. And you also, we might find issues like we did here with the data that we might catch. Well, that doesn't make sense to us. If we put it out to the community, there's going to be a lot of confusion if it's not caught in the transition. So that's my thoughts.
Trustee Moser, did you have your hand up a minute ago?
I, I just think that when you go to the community, you need to be clear as far as what needs to be done and what we're expecting from them. And if we, we're still engaging them through whatever communication we need to do right now, through the input phase of the collecting data. But to present something, it has to be clear and it has to be concise prior to going out to the community and collecting feedback on that.
I agree.
One question I would have is, it says two scenarios. How do we come up with two? Why is two the number?
Good question. I think as we've been exploring options, I guess the, a way to look at this is, you know, from that data, you can draw many different conclusions from, from it. And so, you know, what we saw is kind of two scenarios is a way to kind of explore two, two different paths. And, and we intentionally are looking at it as a path sort of keeps things pretty much the same and a path that's, you know, that's going to be some changes, rethinking how, how you organize, you know. I mean, we may look at K through eight scenarios and things like that, how we might reorganize. And part of that has to factor into, as you were talking about, the, just, you know, you have, you are, you don't have much land. We have to also think about, you know, just how things are phased and all of that. Think of swing space and all of that stuff. So we were intentionally trying to look at it as a way to show kind of a spectrum of, of ways that you can move forward. And so that's why we've, we've talked, when we've, you know, we've, we've started thinking about this. We've shared some ideas with the district about this. And so that's why we're approaching it that way. However, I mean, if it makes more sense to do something different, we're open. But that's kind of why we, we have been looking at is more of this, this spectrum, to then kind of get a, get a feel for where you want to go. The other piece, too, is the, the cost implication, too. We haven't discussed that yet. And so this also may show a range of costs, too, that would be a factor in, in considering moving forward.
But with the two scenarios, we're not saying either or?
Right.
No.
Okay.
It's, they're not options.
Okay.
I think scenario can be a little bit of a confusing and vague term, and that's our fault. But really, a scenario is, is an approach. And so what they're, they're designed to do is almost kind of tease out the priorities, so people can ask questions about them, and we can work through each one. And so it's not necessarily, I mean, it could be one or the other, but we actually don't imagine that that's necessarily the case. But from I, each one, there are enough questions posed about what's proposed in each one, that then the priorities can be deduced from either scenario, that then the right one or the one that makes the most sense can rise from the top. So they're different enough in each one.
Trustee Petlicov?
Can you also include in that, not only the cost factor, which we know is going to be a big question when people are looking at the scenarios, is also the timeframe for them? I know we're talking about priorities, but then how long is it going to take to complete each, you know, venture that you're going out on? Because some people think that you can, you know, do something within six months, that actually is going to take two years to complete. So that they have an understanding of the scope of time that it's going to entail, too.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
I understand what you're talking about, the two scenarios. You said, like, the status quo and innovative. And then you find where, now, will that be done for each building? Or is it just in general?
It's in general.
Okay.
It's a district-wide approach. So, yeah, for each building, I mean.
How do we apply it for each building?
Yeah, I mean, in the, that's kind of like way even further down, once you actually get into the actual design of that, you know. So the outcome of this work is not going to be individual designs.
Okay, that's how parents are thinking, though. Parents are thinking, my building is what I'm concerned about. So that's.
Yeah, I, I understand that, that concern. Yeah, well, I think what will be helpful is, it's, you know, we're talking about something right now. And once you, we see it, then, you know, I think it starts to make a little more sense when you see the scenario. So what, what we mean is really different ways you can apply this master plan moving forward. So it's different approaches. And, and if you think of it like as a roadmap, there's kind of some different paths that you can take. You know, we're getting you to the end, but there's different routes that you can kind of take. So you can kind of go this way or kind of go that way, but it's still going to get you to the end. And so that's really what we're trying to create with it. And I think with having two different scenarios or approaches at kind of both ends of the spectrum, it, it will allow you to engage your community in a way to see which way are they leaning? Is it, you know, are they way far on one side or the other? Or are they smack in the middle? Or are they leaning one way or, or the other with, with this approach? But it will be a district-wide thing. So it's really about, you know, do we keep all 30 schools as is, kind of? Or do we start to rethink, maybe there's only 25 schools throughout the district, or there's some other different configuration? You know, we know at the high school, there is need there at the high school level. And, but we also heard a lot about, you know, getting real-world experiences. And, you know, and so a lot of districts are exploring high school not as a comprehensive high school anymore, but more of a distributed throughout the community, and more as creating hubs in the community. So it's, it provides richer opportunities for students to connect them to real-world experiences. So those are the types of thing that, things that we can explore. So it may not be, you want, you know, individual comprehensive high schools. It's more of a, thinking of high school as a network of, of learning hubs. And so that, that would be more of a progressive approach that we see districts exploring now, that really relates to providing those experiences, real-world experiences that, that they desire.
Trustee Barry?
What I'm hearing, though, the two scenarios is, you know, status quo. Do we just keep on doing what we've been doing every five to 10 years for the last few decades? Or do we get aggressive? The last time we went out for a bond, our biggest obstacles, there's a couple of groups that were our biggest obstacles, when I and some of us sat down with them. They said, well, if we're going to spend that kind of money, this is what we expect, one, two, or three. And I said, well, you just, between one and two, you just spent the $240 million that we're asking you for. And then some of them actually said, why didn't you, like, put it out there? This is what you need. You know, we were like trying to find what that magic number was. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and say that this presentation right here, nothing really surprised me, me personally. FCI, I always thought that there's a way to figure that out, but I didn't know it was a simple formula. Well, it's not a simple formula, but just what you put out there. Be very honest with you, you should be, I respect, I respect all this work that was put into this. Let me tell you why. Because our parents, they're going into these buildings and listening to their students, were telling us this a few years ago. We weren't listening. We were trying to figure out what can we get past, what can we pass through our voters right here. When I said earlier that this information is out there, there's a few people here that, you know, you're probably thinking, there's only three or four people at a study session. But they represent different parts of the community, too. Hundreds, if not thousands of people, that they're going to be on the phone with, or maybe club meetings, or what have you. I think it's up to us right now to make that decision, what direction we want to do. And we might, when, when, when we see the cost, we might say, that's what we hit the brakes and say, this is what we have to do. But if we really, really want to take this district to the next level, we got to put politics on the side and get a little bit aggressive. What is the right thing for our students? The administration tells us, helps us with numbers, helps us with, you know, what the future looks like. But we're here, we represent the community. They put us in these seats. Now, the part about what trustee Petlicov mentioned earlier, very, very valid. At the end of the day, when it's cost involved, it's not the same people that are going to be making this decision. But there's a good friend of mine here in this room that I can sit down with, have a cup of coffee, and explain to him, this is what we need. This is what our district needs. And, you know, what I do for a living, also, I can go out there and explain to people the value of your homes, you know, this is, this is an investment, you know. We can sell that if, if we have the appetite to do the right thing. But if we're going to try to just kind of figure out what that magic number to get past our voters, it blew up in our face last time. So this information is very, very valuable to me, and I'm sure it's very, very valuable to all of us. So I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
I feel like we started down this path about 14 months ago, if that seems about right. So I remember thinking a year ago, I can't wait to see what this study starts to, to show us. So it is, it is very good that, that we've gotten to this point. Anything else that you'd like to say before we begin to wrap up?
Just thanks, thank you for the time and space to allow us to share this and to engage with you and, and your community. It's been a really rich experience so far, and we're invested. So we're excited to, to see what the future holds.
And everyone's clear on what our next steps will be? Dr. Milico?
Just quickly, I want to thank Jessica and James for working with our team and all the working hours and time you've put in. Thank you. And I know there's more to come, so. Look forward to more.
And I want to thank everyone for taking the time to be with us tonight on a non-normal board session. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.